Okay, it is nine AM on Monday. August 13, 2018, I called the County Commissioners's Court to order. Today we have Jeff Ponder from the Church of Bush.
Father, we love you. Thank you so much for the morning you've given us, for the time together. And God, I pray that we meet in God and all the business that will be done, God, that He will be honored and glorified through it. And Father, thank you for this council, God, and all that they do. Father, I pray you give them wisdom, guidance, direction, God, clarity of mind as well, as they make decisions that affect so many people. God, I pray that He will bless them in all that they do. God, again, thank you for a wonderful city, a great state, a nation. God, continue, pray, blessing over it. God, may we always be a nation and a country that honors the Lord. God, thank you so much for all the blessings you give us. Thank you for the day you've given us. And pray, Father, that you will bless our time together, and you be glorified and honored in this brief a day where everything's setting down, in Christ's name.
Under the Texas flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one entity indivisible.
First thing on the agenda is recognition of amendments from July 23, 2018, Commissioners's Court meeting also July 27, 2018, Special Commissioners's Court meeting. Number two, budget amendment. Consider an act upon approving budget amendments for the 2017-2018 fiscal year.
Carrie, I just have a question on item one. It's a small donation, but I'm not sure who the donation was from, for fire and rescue.
There was just like a couple of $100 checks. From St. Hudson Church, and then from Carl and Teresa Seabrooks. I'm sorry. Could you stand up, please? I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Wanted to have a $100 check for, from St. Hudson Church. And the other one came from Carl and Teresa Seabrooks.
Are they MR or any particular, or just this small donation for fire and rescue?
They want to use it for education and accountable education and training.
Judge, I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments as presented for the 2017-2018 fiscal year.
The motion, and second on favor. Vouchers to consider an act upon approval of payment vouchers, processed by the County Archers Office, prepared July 18, 2018, through August 18, 18. Check numbers 181464 to 181746, in wire transfer, 1109 through 1117. And the total amount, this is including the payroll register, of $3,981,952.48.
We approve the vouchers as presented.
Second, for a quick discussion. Carrie, I have a question on page nine of 29. Check number 181589. It's a couple of line items. Little Rock Holdings, can you tell me what that is? Seems a little unusual. It's actually... It's Drills, Money. What is the language? That's the corporate office. Okay, all right. It just was an unusual cable, so I thought I'd ask. And then on the same page following, there's quite a few line items for Bob Barker Company Inc. for, it looks like new shirts in the detention center?
It's...
It's very new, okay. Thank you.
I need a motion, second on favor. Number four, insurance report.
Which nothing unusual.
Okay. So recognize, number five, Texas Department of Motor Vehicles, to consider an act upon A, the imposition of calendar year 2019 optional county fees, and B, an additional fee for court-appointed special advocates. Let's do A first. Is there anything unusual about that? This is the usual thing we always do every year. Carrie, anything unusual about that?
The road bridge is always $10. Does it go, remain the same?
Yes.
Okay.
About how much is said, bring me in here?
I have no idea. I don't know anything with that.
So far this shirt's brought in for $846,000.
And that all goes to the road bridge?
It's actually in July, the road bridge.
Move that we approve the optional county fee for road and bridge of $10 per registration.
Second. I need a motion, and a second on favor. Okay, and B, additional fee for court-appointed special advocates. Is there someone to speak on that? Anybody?
We talked about this last year. It was a dollar and a half, and we didn't approve it because it goes to the city. I was saying, concerned that it would never get to them.
I sent it to her, and she wrote back, and she said, "Well, I kind of forgot about it." So she doesn't seem too interested in it, so I guess we'll just...
So no one's here on that particular item? Something like... We need to vote on that anyway?
I move that we not add an additional fee of $1.50 for court-appointed special advocates this year.
I would second, with just maybe a quick clarification for the notes. I would agree with Commissioner Church that a follow-up from last year was that the city, there would be a discussion with the city, that there would be some type of interlocal or dialogue, that if we implemented this fee, it would go to what that intent was. Because if I remember, it would go positive school crossing guards. And there was some confusion of if that money would get to our intended purpose. So whoever's leading that effort for cost, I would agree with that comment.
Have a motion, and second on favor. Four to zero. Thank you. Number six, district attorney to consider an act upon the donation of one Celebrite UFEV Touch Ultimate, Otter County Asset Number 21409 to the Emerald Police Department. Sense.
Ted Scannard.
What is this exactly? Silberup.
The machine that we're wanting to donate to Emerald Police Department is a device that they use to, you have to protect cell phones, because they can be cleared from anywhere if you're on, some if you're not. And so, the Silberup machine is basically a box where they get those in there, and they turn it on, and it's protected, so that they can actually download stuff. We had one case in particular recently where God led a phone to the scene of a murder. And he had a bunch of criminal mischief and all that kind of stuff, but God in there.
Well, there he is.
So, and it's fine that it was.
Not very smart behavior.
And when the first were using it about 2010, what was the situation? Something like that. Bought an asset for $9,500. We loaned it to them on the police department, because the collectors had money, but they needed it, and didn't seem to have the money to do that. So now, and also a sense that come out the new version of it, so they're not going to be upgrading this one anymore. So you can turn this in, and the new one's only going to cost $3,000. So that's what Carrie and I figured out to do, was first, um, the current one to Emerald Police Department.
And then to turn it in for the credit? Then to turn it in for the credit, is what your plan is for a new one? And you think they have funding for the new one?
Yes, yes, because they're, they're the ones that contacted me about it, and then we had to find a place, and then find a new one. Try to get a model, to get $3,000. I mean, the new one's just going to cost $3,000. When we bought them, the new one, it was $9,500.
I make a motion that we approve the donation of the UFEV Touch Ultimate, Otter County Asset Number 21409 to Emerald Police Department.
I have a motion, and second on favor.
Okay, nice partnership.
Thank you very much.
Number seven, asphalt donation to recognize donation, 1600 tons of rap material from the Texas Department of Transportation. This is something that happens every year, right, Sebastian?
Yes.
My only question is on your documentation here. It says it's required by Texas each year to donate materials in surrounding counties. What's the requirement? I was interested, what required them to do that?
I have no idea. They just have to give so much away every year to surrounding counties. They give some to Rando.
Sure. I just didn't know if that was a statute or something that required them to do that.
To recognize them. I have a motion, second on favor. Number eight, elections to consider an act upon the order, two more, the general election for November 6, 2018, to consider an act upon the order of appointing election officials ready to pay in maximum number of perks and voting locations for September 2nd, 2018 through August 31, 2020. And to inform the court of the purchase of a four MAX 6204 inserer and folder to be purchased with special fine, 237, checking 19,9,995 dollars, which has goes to office machines, reimbursable to fine of 237, Secretary of State's office. Good morning. How are you today?
I am good.
Good.
First one, I guess we should take these one by one. And so, we're going to be on a general election, we only don't have to do this, but we do have, in this case, have to order for our local elections that are county level. And so, that's what you can look for you, along with the hours for the early voting. And we are not proposing that we open up our, this part of the order should have on there.
I didn't see any hours.
Oh. Yeah, we, yeah, they're there. Page two. In page two, that's in there.
My page two is this.
Yeah, I don't have this. Okay. And so, we are not asking to open up the polling sites on Sunday, the branch sites. We're required by law to open up our main location, which is Santa Fe Building, but we were wanting to not open on that one Sunday, just with all the expanded hours we're doing. That one was something we felt like could go.
So if you, would you recap the hours?
Hours first week are eight to five at all locations. Saturday, Santa Fe Building is seven to seven, and the polling, the temporary branch locations are noon to five. And then Sunday, Santa Fe Building would be noon to five. And then the second week, Santa Fe Building is seven to seven, all week long, is required by law, and the other sites would be eight to five.
I think the initial was on the location.
It's under, yes, it's United and he knows it is.
Oh, it's under, okay.
Yes, that's why you don't say it's United in front of it. It's on that second page on the branch locations, was it left off?
Right, no, this one. Okay, okay.
We don't see it. Okay, you want these one at a time, or you want to just do the ones?
Let's do one at a time.
All right. And then to consider an act upon the order to, on two orders, in my election number six.
Second.
I have a motion, and second on favor. And then B, to consider an act upon the order of appointing election officials ready to pay maximum number of perks and voting locations.
And on this one, I'm very excited to say that we're able to cut the number of maximum perks we need because of our new election equipment. And so, in this order, one thing that's on there is the maximum number of perks that would be appointed, had been given side, that's in column number two, and that is, I can't remember how many less, but it's roughly 20, 25% less than it is going to be the past for our maximum.
Need a motion on that?
Need a motion, do we need to say what the, what the amount for our order is? I move that we approve the order of appointing election officials, pay rate of $11 per hour for the judges, and $10 per hour for the...
Second.
And polling places also being...
I have a motion, and second on favor.
Okay, and the five, the last one is one that is important, that we're using, so we have 237, which is, both are our chapter 19 funds, and to purchase a inserer folder, and this is one of those kind of beautiful things where you get somebody else to pay for, or something for you, and so this is reimbursable to our fund, 237, by Secretary of State's office. What is nice about this is we have been borrowing the tax office's folder inserer for some time. It had to have some work done on it recently, and we were told that it's basically obsolete. So it's repaired at this time, but one more break and it's done. So we were ordering this, and then we want to loan it back to the tax office when they do their mail out each May for the taxes. So again, it's just kind of a nice way, a good partnership that has worked for us, and we're excited to be able to pay it back to the tax office. That one doesn't require...
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else? Are you ready to go on the edge?
Yes, I am. I think I am.
You are?
Yes, I am.
Are we, are we giving a motion or anything?
I'm standing up here for number nine.
Okay. Number nine, Hava Grant, to consider an act upon request to apply for grant funds under the Help America Vote Act for security assessment of Otter County's voting system.
Yes. And Hava has been refunded to a much lesser degree than it was in 2000. They gave the state of Texas about $23 million. And it's unlike with the first time that it was funded, in the first time it's funded, how many use that to purchase an election equipment. This time, the Secretary of State has designated it for security assessments of elections. And they have set as a goal, they want all of us to apply for this, and they want all of us to have done this security assessment by next summer, because they're really wanting to have any, any potential weaknesses taken care of before the 2020 election. And so, the way this one works, we won't even pay for the assessment in advance, it's billed directly to the Secretary of State. But they will send in a crew, and the crew is from ATNT, is ultimately who it is, and they will be going over both physical and cyber. I just want a cyber assessment of accounting, and they will make then recommendations of what they see, what they believe we should improve. And there will not be money for it to help us improve it, but at least unless there's money left at the end, they said they might be able to help at the end, but at least the first part of this pool is going for the assessment. I'm excited about it, because I would like to know if there's any, you know, but we feel like we're doing our job well. We feel like, like we are set and ready, but if we aren't, I want to know. And, you know, like Brenda says, voting systems, the voting systems themselves are never ever connected to the internet. So it's not exactly the voting system, it's the election system that they're going to evaluate. There has been some mischief in other locations, some that could be shored up with, with an evaluation and knowing where the vulnerabilities are, and some that's just going to be what they're calling social engineering, that will not, could not be addressed fully by what that would happen with this assessment.
Other incidents in Texas that they're looking at specifically, or these other states?
I think, mainly what I've seen is things in other states. You know, obviously, the social engineering is the big hot button right now. But just as an example, I know in this most recent District 12 Ohio race, there was someone who, and I don't know if they gone into the specific county websites to change this, but they basically changed the locations for voting and confused the voters with where to go, whoever they is. So, you know, I would like to know that our website is secure, I'd like to know that there's no, I can tell you there's nothing up there that could be a problem. On Election Live, we put a PDF up there that is, has the results on it. Even if someone did manage to get in there and change the results of the website, it wouldn't change the results. You know what I'm saying? So, but we want to know. And again, it's something that someone else could recover, it costs them.
There's no way to find mysteriously several hundred votes that just showed up.
Yeah, but they might know, but if they show us a way, then I want to know.
Okay, need a motion, please.
I move that we approve the request to apply for grant funds under the Help America Vote Act for security assessment of Otter County voting systems.
I have a motion, and second on favor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Number 10, sheriffs and constable speeds, to consider an act upon setting a storage fee for constables to be added to the sheriff's, constable speed sheet for 2019, constable stroke.
I just need to add a fee on there with your permission and approval. The reason is this, it is the storage fee for Alderau Louie, when I have a red assistance restriction. Some of these companies are banks, and my recent one was a big old vacuum bitch witch construction equipment, I had two of them. It sat out there for probably about two weeks at the sheriff's board, and that was our intention to get this part of that sheriff's board out there for this stuff, to secure it, to have it in our possession. It's in process of us moving out there. I spoke to my kid about it. However, we can charge a storage fee. My proposal is $30 a day. It is actually up to the Commissioners's Court, which I'll want to charge these companies for storing it, until it goes to court, and then after that, they will issue the check. I did not and could not get storage fees due to it not being on schedule fee or the comfortable fee, because it has to be on there. It has to be approved, and it has to be noted and posted. So my proposal is $30 a day for storage, if I have to store vehicles, equipment, TVs, furniture, whichever else. I think that's reasonable for us to have it out there. That's the purpose of this building, but that is up to you. If you see, if it's too much, that's up to all of us.
Is that a usual fee that other people have done in the past, or do you know?
I do not know.
Does anybody here know that that's a, Sheriff, do you know if that's a reasonable fee to charge? Scott?
The statute allows the fee to cover the actual cost of storing items. In last year's manual, for sheriff and constable fees, there's a schedule for every county to, and the higher fee I saw was $25 for vehicles. There were other levels of fees for smaller items. Livestock, goats, vehicles.
Again, a vehicle compared to a television, that might be a little...
Right, that is, that's a lot harder.
The list without real detail, but...
Just categories.
Automobile, larger vehicles, and then other personal properties, what I've looked at, saw. The highest fee I saw, my accurate payment, which can't be $30.
So two pages.
$25. The plaintiff or the bank, whoever's filing the red assistance restriction. Now, with the smaller items, TVs, furniture like that, those are going pretty quickly. I get the majority of that in the county. I retrieve a lot of property. However, those are turnovers. I mean, they're not staying in storage too long at all either. I'm talking about the big out of county. I'm having to go to construction sites and getting these, or vehicles, $150, it's what needs to be on here, so I can retrieve those, those fees and go into the general county.
So what is the most common theme that you are taking possession of?
Oh, that will be, I have all of Aaron's, I have New Avenue, and I now have a renegade medicine center petitioning the courts for this. So what I'm doing on, almost on a daily basis are electronics, furniture, refrigerators, appliances, all that good stuff.
And for the other three constables, we do a lot of vehicles. We seize vehicles. She does a lot of the home items and stuff, but we do some vehicles mainly. That's what I've been involved in, seizing vehicles.
And who would be the most common person throughout the week that's paying this? Is this an individual? Is it a bank? Is it...
No, it's not an individual. It depends on what happens during the court. It has to go to court, most of the time. They default in payment, or they fall too far behind in payment, they're going to let the plaintiff win, or they don't even show up to court, and it goes into possession of the plaintiff who filed the red assistance restriction, and they will be responsible for those fees, for the storage fees.
And since this equipment and these items belong to somebody else, what is our liability to have?
Well, it's, our, our, our ability is tied and required, negligent or not, and I don't want to be negligent, so that's a valid situation. Now, I'm, in restoring property that belongs to Aaron's, I'm not sure how that's worked. That's the, that's the critical point. Because that's, if I understand, you all are reposessing property for interference if the law is here in this instance.
We're reposessing it...
Ceasing.
We're reposessing it for the court, and then the court decides who gets it.
It's reposessing, and of course, it's, yeah, it's taking possession until it goes to court.
This property has been leased from Aaron's.
Right.
And there's lease payments, so sort of like, not completely...
Absolutely the same. About the same, if you want to put it, but...
You're doing it under court order. It's one order for us to try to say, retrieve this property and take possession of it and tell it goes to court. You don't have Aaron's authority to say, "Go pick up this..."
I do not work for Aaron's. I do not...
You're under court directed. I know that, I'm just trying to facilitate what I think you're asking, in fact.
Well, there's, there's conceivably similar activity, but I don't see that as a good listing.
So I think what I'm hearing, at least amongst the dialogue, is that there would be some tiered approaches, maybe appropriate, and if you see that as a common theme in other counties, where it may be a smaller amount, and I'm just, $10, I'm just making up an amount here with you, $10 for the TV, the furniture, the fast churn things, vehicles 20, and then hot heavy construction equipment 30. I'm just trying to give you some parameters, because if you are seeing things with a heavy, a heavy churn rate, you don't want to implement fees that then become more costly than what you have taken possession of, if that makes sense?
Right. And then another deal is, right after we, we're going to, you're going to look at, fees have increased, which is now up to $30 and everything. A red assistance restriction on this, on this fee schedule, which you'll see, is it's going to go from $150... A writ of sequestration on this, on this fee schedule, which you'll see is, it's gonna go from one fifty to, um, one hundred and eighty. So, I need, what I'm asking for is the larger items, for sure. Now, again, being considerate of the, of the plaintiff, of the, the community and everything else, it's a business. And that's where my meat comes in, in revenue, is retrieving of this property. Uh, I don't want to charge them X amount of, uh, money just to get this done, when it's just a, it's Aaron's furniture. This is not quality furniture, this is not something that we're gonna buy from cavity or something. Um, it's been, you know, more, more than pretty good, but, with that being said, we can do that. I can do a little, uh, a scale.
Volunteer to slum you in large.
I don't wanna overcharge them too much, where it becomes difficult for them to utilize this, what's in, you know, in the civil processing. Part of my job.
And, if I may, uh, if you have a storage fee, it's gonna make Aaron's and some of these others, like the two weeks she had the ditch witch thing, it's gonna make them wanna get to the court and petition the court to get this done. Because once we seize it, it's on those people to go to the court now and request what they gotta request. And, you know, with the storage fee, it's gonna, that way we don't have a whole frickin' block full of property built up, cause the people don't wanna, well, we just, we don't have to really get on it right now, because we're not paying nothing for it. Storage fee will kinda motivate them to, you know, go to the court and get their properties, and try and get their property back.
They're, they're in the, in the law, they have ten days. Okay, you have to hold it two days, and then get to court. That's what the, what the law is.
Um, okay, Judge, I would make a motion that we approve a constable's storage fee in a tier one, tier one, tier two, and tier three level. Tier one being ten dollars, tier two being fifteen, tier three being twenty-five. With a follow-up from the constables of how to define those tiers, just some rough categories.
Have a motion, in a second.
Now, that's just for the constable's story.
That's correct. The motion, in a second, all favorages, right? Thank you, Commissioner. Number 11 sheriffs and constable fees to consider an act upon setting an improvement to 2019 sheriff and constable's fees for civil process service effect of 11, 2019. Does someone have to speak on that? Sheriff?
Why are they increasing?
Yeah, I would think, Commissioner. Sheriff?
We're just trying to stay consistent with the county to the south of.
So, last year, we got a grid, and Ted, you mentioned that, cause I was actually looking for that in my packet. A grid of other counties and their fees and their comparable fee schedule. Is that available somewhere online? I tried to find it, where, where would I go look for that?
The sheriff and constables?
Yeah, normally it was a grid of all of the counties, so we could see where we fit within the state. If we were on the high end, or middle end, or low end.
State control.
State control.
Yeah, they actually make a published version of it.
Yeah, and we're used to kind of a one pager, where it showed all of the 254 counties. The font was not big, I don't mean that, but.
Oh, I don't know, yeah. Um, the one I'm looking at right now is just a booklet that you can download.
Okay. So, okay, we're increasing because Randall is?
These that are being presented are the same as what Randall County put in law for theirs. And so, we're just trying to stay consistent, trying to take down this, and so, we hope all bring that in.
Can you tell us which ones are increasing, cause I didn't have last year's as a point of reference? Are they all of them, are all of them increasing, and no, Constable Strata mentioned one of them? I have a copy if you want.
They all are.
Everyone, everyone increasing about thirty, right? Thirty dollars?
They're all, I think they're all increasing, if I remember right.
Okay.
And again, Randall County cops, uh, Randall County Sheriff's Office contacted our civil department, said, here's what we're gonna list our fees at. And then we got with, with Giggily, and, uh, we determined that they were probably aligned with, with an increase. So, we went, we opted to deal with the same thing.
These fees go into the general fund, is that right?
That's increasing, man.
Well, I just feel, I'm, I'm a little hesitant, Judge, if, if our answer for increasing is only because Randall County is doing it versus what our needs are, and I was just expecting a little.
I would say our needs are bigger than that.
Well, I didn't disagree with that, but I was asking, as an audience that does this every day. Okay.
These fees need to be consistent?
The point is, is that they go through the same courts, or the courts isn't the same. It's kinda weird to have two different deals, but it's just whatever you wanna do. The reason why we did that is to be comparable and stay consistent with the two counties.
I'll tell you from a clerk's standpoint, is that it is easier, like, the clerks try to keep their, well, I know the county clerk, I'm not sure about the district clerk and stuff, but we try to keep our fees the same, because you're dealing with the same, you're dealing with the same attorneys, law enforcement. And so, whenever they're trying to file or get something served, it's easier, um, it's easier for them to know that in real estate, they'll say, the counties are just have different.
That's all, let's say, thank you.
Julie, when's the last time we had an increase? It's been a while since we've had one.
John, would you stand up? Sorry, are, were you standing?
It's been a while.
He already was standing up.
Oh, now you're throwing rocks at it.
I think it has been a couple of years.
As far as I know, we haven't raised, raised the fees in, in some time. And again, Randall County made this, put this in motion, and as the sheriff said, just so we can be consistent with it. I can't say this, that there's a trend developing where certain courts throughout, uh, the area are sending papers to private process servers, alright? And those private process serving companies are then attaching the fees and sending them to the constables. So, apparently, they're charging enough that they're, they're making money on it, so, that's all I can tell you, but we're starting to see that.
Okay.
Would we approve the, uh, 2019 sheriff and constable fees for civil processes?
In a second?
One, 2019. Second?
Okay, you have a motion, in a second, all favorages, right? Four, zero.
And so, then, once y'all place the constable fees back, then we'll add that to the schedule. I mean, cause I'll have to list it when I go into the const, uh, to the controller, what tier one, and, and all that good stuff.
Okay, number 12, seven's maintenance grant contract to consider an act upon approval of statewide automated evictive notification service grant contract with the office of the attorney general of Texas and to authorize Judge Tanner to sign the service agreement, we will notice and make.
I make a motion that we approve the statewide automated evictive notification service grant with the office of the attorney, attorney general.
You have a motion, second all favorages, right? Hand. Four, zero, please. Thank you. Number 13, fire county extension, to hear an update on fire county extension office.
Uh, Judge, uh, Ms. Nichols sent in the emergency, so we'll pass that.
Okay. Okay, number 14, 2018 Edward Byrne memorial justice grant program to consider an act upon interlocal agreement between the city of Bannrell and Florida county regarding the 2018 Edward Byrne memorial justice assistant grant. This is the JAG grant, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Same way we did earlier.
Same way we did earlier.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I move to throw the, uh, the, the, the. Clear?
Have a motion, in a second, all favorages, right? Four, zero. Thank you very much. Number 15, Bushland ISD traffic control. To consider an act upon request of Bushland ISD that Florida county will run or more roadways adjacent to the Bushland Elementary and Middle schools from two-way to one-way traffic under a thoroughly granted by Texas Transportation Code Section 251, 2416, and 2512151. Mr. Wood. Superintendent from Bushland ISD, welcome.
Thank you, appreciate you having me, sir. I'm sure all of you are aware that we have some traffic issues down in Bushland, you've probably heard about it several times. Uh, we looked at it all the summer, and, uh, the sheriffs, Randy Tinsley and Dennis Green, and I sat down, and we've gone through it. I think we have a pretty good plan. Uh, I brought my PowerPoint presentation to show you. Sorry, those of you that can't see this, but, basically, what we're asking for is from this point right here down to the one-way. From my understanding, this road here, all the way to this point, uh, link to here, to Black traditional ISD, and this is the county road. What happens is folks are coming in here, and everybody turns in here to get into the school district, where it backs up both directions. So, what we're, what, what we're asking is for this to be a one-way, in this direction, what I ask. He wants to see my.
Well, I'm afraid I might get a question, I couldn't see the background.
So, basically, what we're, what we're asking is this, for this to be a one-way, we're gonna ask them to come here, come in this direction, go through the parking lot and drop their kids off here. Most basically, having them, parents are dropping their kids off here, and they're having to go across this intersection.
Is this just during school hours, or all the time?
Well, I, I, the way, I'm getting it from Randy and Dennis, or the way to, or the best way to do this is do it all the time.
Okay.
That way, we don't have to train, it's just, uh, lay down. And, and then we also have parents that come here and drop their kids, and they're going across here as well. So, this is where it bothers us. So, what we're gonna have is our buses coming around over here, drop their kids off either here or here. We're asking our parents to come here and drop their kids off in this parking lot, and then we're gonna have, we have a crosswalk here, and we have a crosswalk here. That way, kids aren't having to go across intersections. And we're gonna block this parking lot off, so people can't drop their kids off, off here, and they have to walk across the parking lot as well. They have to come down and come back around this way, and go around that way. So, right now, we have a elementary drop-off here. Now, they're gonna be able to drop off here. Plus, you have all this area to get cars off of Bushland Road.
How many exits from that?
From here.
Parking lot where they drop them off.
They're gonna come in through the parking lot, they're gonna come over here and drop their kids off here. And you're gonna have students go here, elementary go here, we're gonna have a crossing march at both areas, and then they'll come through and back out the way they came. So, we've got all this for cars to, to back up, or right now, we've got this. And then we've got buses that come up in here right now, and they stop, drop kids off, so their lights are flashing, so nobody can move during that time. So, we're hoping it will speed up the process.
So, just to confirm, your request is for one road?
This road, right here.
Okay.
To be the one.
And what road is that?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. And then? Yeah, and headed, one-way, headed north and south.
Headed east, headed east. This is north and south right here.
Headed east, okay.
It sits like this.
Yeah, would you turn and actually, would you do that? Cause that would give me just a little, uh, to try to visualize.
This is Bushland Road, this is the actual.
Yes, thank you.
Are you left, David?
Never. I just think.
What we would ask is for, uh, non-interference here, and a one-way sound right here.
Mister, Mister Sebastian, are you okay with the backside of this PowerPoint?
This is the first I heard of the plan, so I'm not familiar with it, but I don't think they'll get a problem with it. They think that's gonna solve the issue?
Yeah.
Obviously. I think we're safe. We think it's.
I think you will.
Lots of guys, and they sit out there and jerk traffic, or whatever.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I move that we approve the restricting of. Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, which street to work?
From, from Bushland?
From Bushland Road. Uh, east, west, go one-way, one, east.
Okay, I have a motion, in a second, all favorages, right? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 16, land donation for fire station number three to consider an act upon. Fire station number one.
Fire station number one.
Okay. Correction, number 16, land donation for fire station number one, suit of nature donation and land to Florida county for fire station number one, under authority granted by Texas Department of Public Service, eight one one zero three two. Good morning.
Good morning.
The, uh, Mickey family has offered to donate its three point, three five acres, I believe is exactly what it is. It's right at the corner of Blessen and Indian Hills Road. It's in the new development that was removed in the last commissioners court, the plot on it. We've been in contact with them for some time, and when we discussed it, the survey folks said, wait until we approve the plots, so that we can just do this a lot, block, instead of having to dig meats and bams as much, easier. So, that's why that's coming today. Um, they've offered to donate the land to us for ten dollars, for ten dollars total, ten dollars, about, ten dollars. And it's the county's land, as long as it's used for a fire station. At such a point as we could, doing that with the land in birds back to the, it's the same land deal that was on the, the, uh, station, that was the old station three. It's basically the same, uh, deed that was on it.
I have the warranty right here, uh, do you have ten dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I certainly do.
So, do you want them to sign it right now, or do they sign it later? So, Pat, just so, I'm, the donation for the land, is that to add another fire station or replace the one that's currently?
Replace the one that's currently there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Somebody, the family here?
Yes, two, both ladies will stand up, please.
Thank you.
Yes, we appreciate it very much. It's a good piece of land, uh, it's in, it's in a good location for us. We appreciate them very much, helping take care of the fire department and their community, that's who's gonna benefit growing.
All right, okay, need a motion?
I move that we approve the donation of the land in Parkland Fire Station one, under authority of the Attorney General of Texas.
Second? Have a motion, in a second, all favorages, right? Four, zero. Thank you very much. Number 17, where'd you go? Oh, Richard, Richard's here, I didn't see him. To consider an act upon whether to lift the county's burn ban.
Morning. We've had a lot of pressure put on us to do this, uh, outside of bringing the court to talk about it. We've had people stop by the station to let us know what they think. Right now, to recommend lifting the burn ban. We got rained one day, that night, we caught fire all night, all the next day, and then the next day. Uh, this weekend, we have been on a fire since Saturday afternoon, and just got pinched up last night. We're at the point that the moisture of this country is not enough to replenish the soil to keep us from burning. And right now, anything that's hitting the ground that's hot is starting a fire, even in the green grass. So, um, I don't think we can recommend lifting the burn ban at this time. We're still allowing people to burn household trash to have cooking and camping fires. So, I think we're on the right course of allowing that to take place. And we just need to hold off on, uh, lifting the burn ban completely. Kind of problem associated with that is the cost of response. Once we lift the burn ban, there's gonna be a lot of fires that we'll be running to, so, we're gonna try to limit that till, uh, till it's extremely safe to do so.
I think it's currently, it's going till September eighth, correct? Okay, so we'll just redo it if we're currently in health.
Yeah, at that time, I'll raise the vote beforehand, so we've talked about it again. Normally, August is a fairly wet month, so I keep hoping that the forecast is gonna. Normally, August is a fairly wet month, so I keep hoping that the forecast is gonna open up and give us the, the rain that we need to be able to lift it, but so far, that hasn't happened. We've had a few places that have got rain. Like I said, one of them, we got so much rain that all of our trucks got stuck, we had to take bulldozers out there to pull them out, and the next morning, it was back on fire. So it's really dry right now.
Why do you suppose somebody said the counties are different?
I don't know. Um, I do know that Randy County lived theirs, and at the time, they had lived theirs, they had a weekend where they had over two inches of rain on Saturday and Sunday, and they actually had some low-level flooding, some flash flooding, and it allowed them to lift their burn ban for a little bit. The problem is our rainstorms, as far as Potter County goes, kind of to the military sound when they come through, and parts of our county have gotten tremendous amount of rainfall all at once, and then the other part of it is still dry. So I'm trying to stay uniform throughout the county. I would like to see the county get moisture enough to be able to complete.
I agree with you. I understand that. People ought to know that.
And it is hard to explain that people, just because it rained last night, doesn't mean it's safe to burn everything today, so.
Okay, thank you, Richard. I appreciate you. Number eighteen, Potter County Group Insurance Plan, here the important insurance advisory committee, consider that on the following.
Okay, there's several things here, um, I'll, we'll just go one at a time. That's what I'm gonna do. This is from A, it's TAC. I'm gonna send the spell natus. Natus formulae, correct? Yes, well, the returns about, they didn't give me on August the seventh, and everybody is there with one exception, I can tell you this out, on the seventh, but the three land we discussed, all of the items, the question, natus, prescription formulary, factor change for formulary this year, um, care mark to natus, uh, changed the, the, uh, the Bible from, uh, care mark to natus, um, and so the county has to decide, we have the ability to, uh, adopt their formulary, tax formulary, or to change the formulary to better meet our needs. Uh, I do have a replacement on the disruption report that you have in your packet. Um, the, we discussed the dis- disruption report showing two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars of savings, and there was an error on that report when the report was, um, provided back to us. The actual savings came out to sixty-nine thousand, six eleven. And so I provided that to each of you, and I apologize for the inconvenience there, but there was just an error on that. The insurance advisory committee reviewed, uh, disruption report. It was also provided to Holmes Murphy, and I have Jared Wills here today for questions if you have questions for him. Uh, Holmes Murphy reviewed the disruption reports, um, and potential disruption that we have to the, the, uh, prescription plan, and it is the recommendation of Holmes, not Murphy, and was, um, the recommendation of the insurance advisory committee, uh, to make some changes to the formula. Uh, Holmes Murphy, when they reviewed the change or the revised disruption report, uh, indicated that it would be their recommendation to adopt a formulary that included all the exclusions listed on the disruption report. You'll see on that report that, um, uh, I'll direct you to the column market that run cocaine. It shows in majority of the cases, uh, with any of those disruptions, that the cocaine either stays the same, or it decreases for the employee with the disruption. Um, and under the explanations, if you'll kind of take a look at that, you'll see that in most cases, there is a, a lesser expensive generic drug or no other cameras that's available for the treatment of the same condition. And so it was the recommendation of the, uh, insurance advisory committee to adopt some changes. Holmes Murphy with this new revision recommends that we accept and change to, um, exclude all of those things marked exclusions, and that would render a sixty-seven thousand dollar savings. In other words, we would not, um, do the fire authorizations that are listed there, the double step therapy that's listed there, but only the exclusions. Right, we would do only the exclusions, and that would render a sixty-seven thousand dollar savings. Holmes Murphy felt like the other exclusions would be too disruptive and not render. So that's the recommendation of the, uh, committee was all of Holmes Murphy, but again, the committee looked at a two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollar savings and, and, um, at that time, the committee recommended that we adopt everything, such as the two-step therapy. But with the changes, Holmes Murphy came back and said, only the exclusions.
Any questions?
I think you're saying sixty-seven or sixty-nine there?
Well, if we adopted all of those changes, it would be sixty-nine, six eleven, but with only the exclusions, it reduces sixty-seven thousand dollars savings.
Katie, will you just go on each one individually? Please.
Yes. Okay. I think I made a motion that we approved the insurance advisory committee to adopt the drug formulary as presented with the exclusions to include the double step interruption, maybe?
No, we're not doing the double step because when I presented Davis to the court, the court didn't have, uh, we didn't have that correction.
So how would you like?
Um, with only the exclusions. With only the exclusions.
Let me restate that, and I make a motion that we approve the insurance advisory committee to adopt the drug formulary as presented with only the exclusions from the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen plan year.
Yes.
Can I make a motion? Second. All in favor, Richard? Again? Four zero. Thank you.
All right, the condition management, blue care connections, medicine match.
Yes, Potter County has participated in this blue care connection condition management program, I believe since twenty-twelve. Uh, for several years, we've participated in, and we currently have two hundred fourteen participants participating in this program. It was not included in the original, um, presentation that was provided for, um, um, to set the cost for the plan year. Uh, it was overlooked. It does kind of come at a three dollar per employee per month cocaine, or, uh, cost for this plan. However, because the program wasn't included, Honest RX, um, who, that was included in the initial, um, presentation, and funding allowances has, uh, offered, graciously offered to pick up that three dollar per employee per month charge for the county, so that we can continue this with no additional cost to our budget. And based on that information, it was unanimous by the insurance advisory committee to, uh, accept that blue care connection, uh, condition management at no cost since it's passed through Honest RX.
Okay. And is the plan to add that, that into the cost next year? Is that what, is there just a whole?
Yes, and it has been included in yours past, it just was missed this year, and because of that omission, Honest RX had definitely agreed to pick up the cost.
Anytime you have to put the word honest before your name. That's no wonder.
I move that we approve the condition management, blue cross connections, those that actually.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Richard?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, now I'm gonna try again. Erastie?
I have a hard time.
Ariastie?
Erastie.
Erastie.
Yes, I have, I have to work at that one. I always wanna.
And a syllable.
Erastie. Erastie is a program that, that targets musculoskeletal, that's another one I have a really hard time saying, musculoskeletal system and connective tissue disorders. Um, those type of illnesses are actually the third largest diagnosis for Potter County. Uh, in twenty-seventeen, we, we had one hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars in charges for musculoskeletal type disorders. Uh, so it's, it's no small ticket for, for Potter County. Uh, Erastie targets that type of, of disease process or, or category of diseases. Um, and Erastie is different. It approaches it, um, during a visit, an employee would have a full hour, a one-on-one visit with a professional, then, uh, visits with them. It also does kind of a combination between physical therapy and soft tissue, uh, deep tissue massage, um.
They are amazing.
To, to.
I just finished my last treatment Friday, and they are amazing.
Um, to add to it, um, typically, they say that it only takes three point two visits to resolve an issue, and they did a study of, uh, five hundred and four patient cases through August of seventeen, and, and in that group, they found ten, over ten thousand physician recommended surgeries were, um, avoided. So, um, Erastie comes to the county at no cost to the county, uh, and stands to greatly reduce our cost of musculoskeletal and connective, uh, tissue diseases. Um, the, the insurance advisory committee voted unanimously to pick up Erastie and, uh, also charge a thirty dollar copay to our employees to help drive employees to Erastie for treatment for that type of disorder.
So there's just certain doctors in Amarillo that do this?
There's actually, currently, I'm in one provider in Amarillo and one in Canyon that does Erastie, and it's, uh, the one in Amarillo downtown, it's on Tyler or Taylor Street.
He's in twenty-first floor of the Chase Tower, or whatever it's called now, and he's the same doctor in Canyon. He goes back and forth, but, man, he's, he's a chiropractor, but he doesn't do what a chiropractor does, he uses his thumbs, and he fixed me in four, my back in four visits, fixed my wife's back in three visits.
So, um, the part that, I, I understand the recommendation, the part that causes me just a little pause is between physical therapy and deep tissue massage. Um, and I'm trying to put my taxpayer hat on, right? And I know many people in corporate America that do this and offer this even like as a wellness, um, a preventative measure, even beyond this particular diagnosis. So I recognize that this is no cost to the county. Um, I'm just trying to be mindful and recognize, um, if, if a taxpayer may interpret deep tissue massages going on in the county with obviously all of our funds coming, coming from taxpayer dollars. I recognize this is a copay that someone would pay into it, so this is their own money, it's no cost to the county. Uh, so I was surprised just to see those two recommendations. I know there's other things, um, that could be used to solve this, like they talk about, um, stretching, some stretching exercises, um, there's acupuncture, there's, you know, maybe top ten other things you could do as well. I'm just trying to put my taxpayer hat on, uh, a little bit. So that's the part that gives me just a little pause, is if that may be misinterpreted, right, in a community.
It's my understanding that it's a, a combination approach that's, that's similar to, uh, a combination at this point, the deep tissue massage, uh, to achieve the results. And they have had some excellent results.
Right.
Uh, in, in treating those disease, um, maladies, um, and it is our third largest diagnosis, so I feel like it's a good idea to try to approach that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you.
To try to address that. So it's not just, it's not a massage.
Right.
Uh, if you will, it's a, a treatment that it's just similar to, or can to, uh, the combination.
I'm peroned, I'm using this, Erastie, maybe say the taxpayer money.
Yeah, to prevent surgery if whoever else comes.
Yeah, and I, I would totally agree with both of you. I'm just, you know, I'm the one that kind of just says the things that someone may, may see that, and may say, these are taxpayer funds, and help, we understand that, and so I'm just trying to make sure we're all educated if that question did come up, right? Uh, cause it's new, and I'm, I'm very excited that we're trying different things to try to contain our claims a hundred percent.
I believe you're.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sharon.
When they say deep tissue massage, it's not like a massage, like you go get.
Right.
I mean, it's not, cause it bruises you, and they get, he gets in there and he, it hurts.
So you pay it worth it.
Everybody's to get bruised. People, yeah. But, because I thought I was gonna have to have a knee surgery, and he went in there and, you know, and then they give you the exercises like, um, physical therapy and everything, but three, three visits and we were done, and I haven't had any trouble with my knee since, so.
I thought I was headed towards back surgery, but not now.
Yeah, it's, it's just a different way of treating us when we've got those kind of issues, but it's not like going out and getting massage.
No, I, I recognize that a hundred percent. I'm just reading the material and reacting and just anticipate these questions, right? Just I a hundred percent, I'm with you. If one of the things, Kate, that I think would be nice for the courts, and we don't see this, once we vote, we don't see it again, we just like, oh, we've done it, like that every year. It would be helpful to start to see some metrics with things that we're implementing, and if they are having even a slow decrease of some of our claims, and I, I always feel like that's the picture I'm missing, um, is to see these measures and if they are really addressing the issue.
And we will be looking more, uh, at wellness index over the next few months.
Good, okay, good.
Make a motion that we approve the approach.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on the favor, Richard? Again? Four zero. Thank you. Okay, Kate? MD Live Participation.
MD Live is a virtual visit with its MD physician. Um, and it's a program that provides covered participants care for non-emergency type medical issues, and it, um, it also offers behavioral health news through virtual visits. Uh, the insurance advisory committee did discuss this, and, um, it was their thought and a hope that the behavioral health component might not be, um, be comfortable approaching behavioral health through virtual visits. Um, however, the medical side of it, uh, they weren't comfortable with. There's a cost of forty-five cents per employee per month to implement the medical component, and what this would do is the participant would download the app to their phone or to their computer, and then in the middle of the night, when the baby's sick or whatever, uh, they can go out and go online and set up to see a physician, um, to look at things like sinus infections, strep throat, uh, those kinds of things. And the physician could actually write a prescription or call in a prescription for those things for the, uh, participant, and it would save those middle-of-the-night emergency runs, unnecessary emergency runs, and would stand to save the county a significant amount of, of money, even though it does come with a small price tag. For the medical only component, it's forty-five cents, um, per employee per month, comes to two thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars, um, that it would take for a year to cover employees, uh, for that MD Live. The insurance advisory committee voted to implement the MD Live program for medical only, and to limit a ten dollar copay for the employee to try to drive the employees to the MD Live, uh, and reduce those emergency costs.
I have a question on the claims part of it. So, um, wherever the other MD resides in, would that be considered an in-network provider? Like, I think about your provider list that you go see.
It would be through MD Live.
And so are they automatically kind of grandfathered in into our provider listing? I'm assuming so.
They, they are, and, um, Candy Davenport is here with TAC, and she can help address those questions, but they are set up and contracted with MD Live, and so the claim would run through MD Live, is that? Yes, and that, that, the physician.
Yes, and that, that, the physician that the member saw through that visit would be in network.
And would they coordinate back to a patient's primary care?
They can.
Okay. But they don't, they don't do that as a default unless the patient says, please let Dr. Smith know, I apologize.
Yes.
Okay. So that, I'm assuming these are things you're going to bring up in the enrollment?
Yes.
Meetings coming up. I think it would be really helpful to tell us as patients and consumers if we need, if, because I can see where people would use this. This really is kind of the way of the future, to be honest with you. It's something I've used personally, but to educate that a patient needs to tell them to call their primary care or to let them know the primary care. And see how someone could miss that. And then they go to their primary care, maybe they've been using MD Live for the last six sinus infections they've had. And the primary care knows nothing about it. And there's something long-term, they go to Dr. Smith, but they don't have. So it's a lot of times what happens to patients. There's no holistic. And so primary care is in the dark, if you will. And the patient thinks they're doing the right thing and trying to save money. So that would be helpful on the education piece. I can see how a patient could miss that very easily.
We can certainly follow up strongly on that. If this is approved, it will definitely be covered in detail during the enrollment meetings. And this year, those open enrollment meetings are mandatory because there are some changes. So. Any other questions?
No, I have a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the insurance advisory committee to implement the medical only component, $10 copay for the 2018-2019 year at a cost of 45 cents per employee to implement.
So.
I have a motion, second on the favor of your attorney.
Four zero. One more, Kate. The very last process.
The very last thing is the appeals process. The insurance advisory committee did not form a recommendation on this particular item. They felt like it was something we just made in the grandstanding commissioners court and to leave it to you guys to make that decision. Currently, Potter County utilizes the Texas Association of Counties appeals process that goes through multiple layers. At the end with an agreement process, agreements committee with their attack. But because we are an administrative services only or self-insured group, we have the ability, if we want to, to step out and say, we want to add a layer in the appeals process to bring the final decision back to the county, be it through a committee or through the commissioners court. And just as a matter of transparency, we wanted to bring this to the commissioners court to let you make that decision. I think there are some, some pretty strong concerns with bringing it back to the commissioners court. You know, we could end up with a lot of inconsistencies due to some non-medical conditions. But we have that ability. And so we wanted to bring it back to commissioners court to let you decide whether you wanted to keep the appeals process managed by Texas Association of Counties or to add that final layer and bring it back.
I think we'd be adding some of the issues with the county probably not good to. That would be.
Let's make a motion. Do we need any more questions?
Yeah, we'll.
Okay.
I make a motion that we continue the current process of the appeals process to reside with the Texas Association of Counties.
I need a second. I have a motion, second on the favor of your attorney. I need to get it. Number 19, wireless connectivity. Do you consider an act upon approval to hire consultant for Phase 1 courthouse wireless infrastructure project? Good morning.
How are you?
Good, and you?
Yeah, I apologize. I did not get this into your guys' packet. This is a difficult we have to look at. I like the print.
Yeah, that's better.
Better my writing, that's for sure. So what we've done is we've sat down with several different vendors trying to go over what our options are, what we can, what we can't do to help alleviate some of the issues that we're experiencing. We sat down with Moore Electric and they've run in Axon to look at the wireless and what we could. So the, the first phase of that whole idea is to do some testing. We're going to do some testing in June there to, first off. And what we're going to do is take one of the access points, make it a bridge so that we can kind of alleviate some of those smaller bridges that we have throughout the department. Making that access point bridge, we'll be able to tie it into a switch and then wire it from the switch to the different phones and computers. So we want to test that out, see if that's going to be feasible, if it's going to help at all. And if it does, I think we're probably going to expand that out and, you know, to some different areas to try and reduce some of that congestion. So that's the first phase of it. The, the second phase that we're looking at is if we don't get the results that we really want doing that, we're going to look at putting some switches in just. We have some wires, you know, in the building, some, some locations that are hardwired. So we're, we're going to look into putting some switches in just. The difference being that if we, as first phase, use an access point, so we can kind of put those switches where we want them. Kind of centralize them in, you know, in the middle of, of the people that we need to kind of fix. So if we're going to do it the hardwired way, we're limited by words and wires, actually. So.
You might just sound so super.
Yeah, words.
And Brandon, this is coming out of your networking account or IT?
Yes, yes, yes. We're going to go ahead and take that out of there and, and like I say, we're pretty hopeful that one of those two solutions will work or at least help in, in some fashion. So we just, like I say, we've just got so much traffic that's going through all the different software stuff that we use now.
And if this is approved, I wonder, what will it be?
Probably pretty quick, within the next week or two. And then get it set up and then leave it for a couple of weeks to see if it helps. So.
I make a motion that we approve the hiring of a consultant for Phase 1 of courthouse wireless infrastructure project. Amount of $3,800 to come from the IT network account.
So.
I have a motion in a second on the favor of your attorney. Four zero. Okay, I want to move number 24 up in front of number 20. Closed meeting to convene a closed meeting pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551, 101. One to seek advice on the current pending or possibly litigation. It is 10:19. No recess or a few minutes, I'll be back. Number 20, employment hours. Do you consider an act upon approval for employment hours? Mainly some facility discharge of Arvinda Samora as custodian one, effective July 24, 2019.
I'm going to move, we approve it, didn't you? Implementative assessment.
So.
I have a motion in a second, all favors your hand. Number 21, Potter County Projects.
Okay, the law enforcement center building, vehicle maintenance projects just pretty yep. Right now we have 15, 15, 15, 15, 15 project out there. Out of 15, eight will be completed, this one might not turn into seven or one of the 20s between the other buildings. Majority of them we got to deal with right now, some water leaks that happened out there last Friday. You remember when we had the dedication in front of the building, looked real nice, small round and everything, composite metal panels on the front? We had issues with it getting corrected properly. Western builders committed to tear it off prior to the dedication and I told them, no way to the finish. So then they came back after that, the company come here from Dallas, they removed them. The yard oven, they went through and put up some inch panels once again. And Western builders in Potter County, they rejected that. So as it stands right now, we have over 60 of those panels damaged after a scratch, ended, not put up properly. I was contacted by Western builders about a week and a half ago. They wanted to know if they could give Potter County monetary value for those panels because they cannot get the company out of Dallas to kind of make it corrected. I told them no, but we would present it to the commissioners court. As it stands right now, they have fired a contractor out of Dallas, they're bringing in a new one. They will be here the week of August the 20th to take all the measurements. October the 22nd, when their anticipations are returned, it'll take about two weeks to put on new panels from a different company. It'll still have the same look as it has after about now. Punch lists are still currently ongoing that we'd actually performed back in March. Pay application, number 23 will be forthcoming to you. This is the first small one, this is over $5,000. This is the last of the scope work that they had to do and the payment still will be withheld. As of today, I'm holding over 60, I think $66,000 of the money. Western builders calls, they don't have money real bad. Whenever they finish the composite metal panels, we'll get it to them. And they get to close out documents to us and we'll get it to them. That's a big problem, Western builders and our contractor not seeing high down what they are required to turn in or to close out documents. I set the standards when the bid specs went out there, nobody understood it. And they're just having a hard time getting it completed. I'm going to look at this afternoon or tomorrow, send Western builders weather. You cannot break them like this. You want your $60 something thousand with hope, I think it was around $12,000 that month. Or we can get our documents. We cannot go out there and have even gas bills in the project. We don't have any documents on this project until we get decent possession. The sheriff's department demolition was supposed to be completed yesterday. The contractor, which was a little bit out of Bill Passo, and they did not understand the civil work that had been done over there. You all seen that ongoing right now. As of today, liquidated damages will be enforced at $500 a day. It's busy with the company out of Bill Passo, make them aware of this. They actually brought in a local contractor that fit against the wrong project. South work over there. And the anticipated completion, right now, we're looking at August the 24th for all demolition to be completed. Landscaping was supposed to have started today. We have actually moved it out because of the demolition. We are anticipating it to start on August the 27th. If it can start sooner, we'll do that. The completion for it is now September.
Okay. Okay, we're done. Thank you. Number 22, the jail report. We have 588 individuals in our jail. 79 of those are females. 84% are felons, 9% misdemeanor cases. And as I said, we do have an agenda to the agenda. Sheriff, if you want to come on up. Inmate housing, do you consider an act upon approval at the interlocal agreement? We don't count for inmate housing.
We don't have a copy of the internal.
I'll make a copy.
I know we've got work. Assist another contract to give us more bed space. Right now, we have this morning, we have 13 bed beds and 17 female, 17 female beds. And that is not, it might take you considering five cases, but 13 beds for the male is probably around about five. And that's all we have in store. Lovett North, we have, we can't believe the male beds, we'll get two male beds. We under his offer, but I said that they would guarantee at least 10 beds and probably 15, so that's all we have this contract.
So Sheriff, you mentioned a couple of others. What are the other counties? Anola, Buck, Randall, Childress.
We already did have one with Lovett. We have one with Childress, Carson County, and Orange County.
How many, how many bases are we going to have? Two, about two now?
I think they're four.
Four. Okay.
It's $40.
It's not going to help us.
Pretty good. Yes.
Is that our rate?
That's, that's cheaper than what we. I was just thinking, we said it's $40. I think Childress is like 48. 40 bucks. More or less than a grand. I forget what kind of is like 65. It is not even 40, Childress, so I'll be a little closer. Maybe we'll do this.
I'm going to move, we approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for jail services with the Freedom County.
So.
I have a motion, second on the favor of your attorney. Four zero. Thank you. County insurance office, do you know anything?
Now we have two. There was a 2012 and a 2016 in the sheriff's office. We're working through that. One was it like a camera, hit right type situation? If I understand, the other one was an officer backing out and giving. Captain Coffee, do you have anything else to add?
What you said was correct. We got a car, you know, damage, backed into a vehicle. It was like a metal, metal black on the front and back, no damage to that vehicle.
And what about the other one?
He was sitting in front of his house and got a spot, we don't know.
Maybe you shouldn't have missed him in his house.
We talked about that.
Okay. Okay, are there any? I understand there was a, someone in one that could help would come in so far.
But I got one left.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for waiting for me.
Please state your name and your address, please.
Okay, my name is Mary Rocke and I reside at 66 F3 Stone and Drive. And I came today to, I wanted to voice my support for Potter County and all law enforcement. But this is citizen living apartment owner. But today specifically, I wanted to talk about the constables. And I wrote everything down so I wouldn't forget anything. As a citizen, I appreciate our constables providing the necessary mandatory services within their scope of responsibilities. They are fully licensed peace officers with the ability to write tickets for warrants and perform other regular duties. In addition to the broad field of law enforcement and more than 900 square miles, excuse me, as a hedge of protection and service to many while being in tune with our community. As an apartment owner, I've had unsafe experiences with moving tenants. Thankfully, our Potter County constables were there to help. They were there to safeguard me while I dealt with precarious tenants that I've had to evict. And on one occasion, they ensured the safety of all my members that were left alone in the apartment that I was trying to vacate. And the constables are dedicated, professional, and sensitive, the only ones available. Any law enforcement is valuable and increased law enforcement visibility is unobligating. Even when they're not directly fighting crime, as we heard today, whenever they're directing, directing traffic at Bishopland High School or talking to residents about permanence. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge the efforts of one of the constables in this room, Georgia Estrada. Georgia's made a huge difference, not only in our precinct, but in her community. Amid many of her kind acts, she established the never saw hurricane relief effort for victims of Hurricane Harvey, amassing trucks full of much needed supplies. And her efforts have not gone unnoticed. She's been awarded locally with the Heart of the Vario Award at the Hispanic Heritage Lunchroom last year and Constable of the Year Award at Justice with the Peace and Constables Association. and Constable of the Year Award at the Justice of the Peace and Constables Association Annual Conference earlier this year. I just think that she is a excellent role, role model for our younger generations. All of our constables do great things every day. And I hope they can continue doing those great things while keeping us safe and bringing up time for other law enforcements to do their jobs. Um, regarding the increase in fees for the civil service processes that we talked about earlier, uh, item number eleven, of course, as an apartment owner, I don't want those fees raised, but I also am in full support of what they do, all of those services. You know, things that they go through every day that I didn't speak up against it because, you know, I just know it's, it's, that's just one of the very many needed services that they provide. And I'm for that, so.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you very much. Okay, number twenty-five, budget for fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-eighteen, twenty nineteen. To discuss the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-eight, not making any action necessary. Carrie, we're gonna put that back on the screen for us.
I'm gonna have to stop places to get other.
That's fine. There's not a whole lot to discuss today on thing. One particular item on our, on our schedule. Um, just a couple of things I want to bring up on the, um, the sheriff who made Mrs. Virginia. Um, I saw on the news that, that River Road did the, uh, active shooter thing, could you hear?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Right. That was very, very commendable and very informative. I saw it on the news. It was very good. Uh, the SRO, SRO vehicle that they drive out there to the, to the on-site of the schools. So anyway, they can drive their own vehicle. You're just, you're just gonna leave it in the parking lot anyway, right?
They do respond to calls with those schools.
They do?
Yes, ma'am. And they respond from school to school. If we're busy, we have all out there in the building, they can also respond as well. Well, that River Road has four schools that they travel between as well as, uh, Wilson has three.
But is it necessary? I'm not, I'm not, I'm just trying to say.
That would give them some kind of, uh, allowance for the, for the gas or the car to put, make them drive their own vehicle out there. So it'd be nice to have a mark vehicle out there. That's what it's supposed to be. And like I said, they do respond to several calls in the night in areas. Plus it has all the emergency equipment in the back, can you tell me?
Okay, um, Carrie, you want to go to the, is there any recent going with any of the equipment beyond wheel, wheeling equipment? Certainly, what you want to discuss in there?
I was gonna tell you the other thing with those cars. We use those during the summer as well because they come back to the family.
Oh, that's okay. Okay. Is there anything changed on the equipment, Carrie, from? Okay, two hundred and fifty-seven. I'm talking to myself, sorry. Okay, the records management, Michael Finn Clark. I'm only leaving that the same. If there's any, uh, any questions or anything, we've already voted on that. I'm gonna leave that the same. Uh, Silvish Maintenance, I've talked to Mike about this and as it stands right now, um, two, it's two guys who are getting five thousand each and Donna was getting her ten percent. Um, okay with Donna getting the ten percent, but I've talked to Mike about leaving that budget, that item in his budget, that position. Do not fill it. Therefore, taking money out each year to, to satisfy raises for people who chooses to give raises to. And I suggested that instead of the five thousand, give two thousand each to Nicholas Wade and to Lance. I'm sorry, I don't know Lance's last name.
Miller.
No, Lance Miller, and two thousand dollars to Mike Ed. And then leave the ten thousand, the ten percent raise to Donna.
So Judge, you're saying two thousand for three employees and then the three thousand eight hundred ninety-seven for Donna? And you're still leaving the position in there.
And he will not fill it?
Uh-huh.
And then he could use that money going next year for other employees, just like other, other departments do a lot.
Right, but that's what we're trying to get a handle on, right, is the moving of that. And, um, as I understood it, the only reason we were kind of even writing those two to three positions was because he was gonna let go of that position to save that money. So I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to brainstorm and how is that to the other end and still leave the position in there.
Given the fact that these are really good employees, but they've only been here, uh, short enough time. I didn't think it necessary to give them that future raise right now. I'm not being personal against them. Um, and certainly nothing personally against Mike's direction. Um, but I just wanted to start off with a little bit of color and then we'll see how they do.
Yeah, and I, I can see that. I just am still wrestling with leaving the position in there. I, I would, I could, I could follow all of that.
Well, the thing is, it's not gonna last forever. I mean, it'll eventually run out of raw money.
Correct, yeah.
So Judge, uh, you're saying we want to reduce that position, letting them have these raises? Is that what we're gonna do?
And as, uh, Mike continues to make those requested changes of the other department, he would bring those to the full court.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and just from the record, uh, the two thousand, I think Nicholas would do better getting the four percent. And so would Mike. So, I'm only wondering if we get the two thousand or the two thousand.
So this is either or. They either get the two thousand or maybe four percent.
So they would make, they would have a better increase if they get the four percent and not get the two thousand at all.
It's either or.
It's what?
It's either or.
Yeah, yeah. For them, I would say give me the four percent if that's gonna be better, but I can't speak for them. I just don't want them.
Get the most out of it.
Exactly.
So in four percent, they could get most and that would just leave no money in your budget for next year.
And then take Donna's ten percent out of that.
Yeah, take that.
That has not included four percent.
So take out, take out those five thousand that you were recommending to move to two thousand and now we're back to take out the even two thousand. Is that right? And just let them have the four percent?
Well, everybody, everybody but Lance. Lance, Lance would do better with two thousand. All right, Carrie.
Are we getting a handle on this out here? We haven't voted on the four percent raise. Have we?
Yeah. Did we vote on that last time? No, we didn't? We didn't vote on that, okay. I thought we did. I'm sorry. I thought we did.
So Carrie, where do they stand?
In your position, will you increase by the now we first?
Are you good? Okay. And then the district clerk, I will leave that the same. That's a, that's a position increase, right? Positional increase. Um, county court honor one and two, um, this is a little tricky. Judge Sherman has not used her third person in that office ever. She's always just used extra help. And so she, along the way, she has given her, her, um, court coordinator and bailiff extra money. Uh, and so they are literally the highest paid bailiff and court coordinator in the county. So they're moving across the street with her when she goes to January one. So not to her, upset, they're on personal budget. She wants to keep their, their, um, their salary of the same until December first. Now, she is getting into the future judge's budget by doing that. Uh, that would be Matt Hand's budget. And, um, I'm not sure that's doable, but, um, that's what she's requesting. So y'all tell me what you would like to do. County Court Honor two, we are removing the court clerk one position. And, um, they're gonna deal with just the three employees.
So does that change, Judge? Does that mean that Matt Hand would have to hire at a lower pay scale?
No, no, his, his pay scale would be the same. It's just, it would take out of his budget. I don't know how much exactly it would take out of his budget for the first, the, the three months that remain in this year. For October, November, December. And then, um, she said that she would, along the way, if he needed help, I don't know how, the district judge could come over here and kind of call it off. I don't think that's possible. Yeah, I think that's, it's not, I only think it's, I don't think it's doable. So, I don't know. Do we know the, do we know the exact money amount on that? So what would it take to do that?
I think it's about twenty-five hundred dollars.
You know, being a new judge, we, we allow him extra money in his travel and education because he has got to go to different schools and. And with all, so as far as additional help, um, I, I don't think he'll, I don't think he'll need it. I don't see the reason why, but I don't know. I'm just.
Would this make her pay that the highest paid pay that the district clerk?
I'm sorry, what?
Will this make her pay the highest paid pay level?
No, they will all be the same. Once they get over there. Well, for the three months, yes, for the three months, but they don't, so they don't go, they don't go to January one.
Also, on January one, though?
Yeah.
It'll be the same as all the rest of it.
Exactly.
Which will be a good pay.
Yes.
It's okay.
It's not really long. It's two thousand seventy-five. I think all the time he gets associated with it.
I thought you were saying they wanted to keep that salary.
No, no, just for, just for the three months after our, our.
The fact he's doing the same thing with us.
Have you talked to Matt yet and just seen his input at all?
He, he, for, uh, each one, maybe he can. The judge himself, we did mention that.
Did he voice any concern or didn't know enough to ask?
He didn't know enough to ask, probably.
But he does understand that his salary is gonna be the second for all.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and then, uh, constables are the same. Um, Sheriff, this is the one that we absolutely just, we'd liked into the city last time, didn't we, Carrie? Um, training personnel clerk, he wants to raise her to forty thousand from work setting. And is that, is that a positional increase, Sheriff, or just because you want to?
Positional.
Positional. Good answer.
What does that mean, Sheriff?
That means there's other positions that pay the same.
And she's responsible for all of her training records that go to the state and keep it all that stuff up to date. She has a lot more responsibility than the other ones.
Is that coming from an open position or where's that money coming from? See, most of the other ones we talked about for open positions.
Not open position. This is just to raise her, just like Caroline's people, just raising for what everyone else makes for that position. Um, who else?
The Carolines was coming from an open position. Sure, the team.
Okay, all the others at the.
It's like we jumped in, just trying to call it out.
Um, any more questions on that one? In fire and rescue, we're just, uh, we're making Pat, Fitzpatrick, uh, rising him to fifty-eight. And he is now, um, exempt from overtime, correct? And then the district attorney, we are, um, getting little health director, uh, to handle those cases. And CSCD, we're getting two, we're adding two employees for the, uh, recall services. And the sheriff, we're adding control deputies. I think that's it. Is there anything else, Carrie? Do I give anything? Okay. So we need to vote on a couple of these things. We've already voted on records management, correct? Don't just position.
No, just put them on the salary position that you just talked about. I just have some questions on some other stuff that came out. I'll wait.
Okay, so airplanes are the same, records management, district clerk, constables, fire rescue. District attorney, court supervisor, relationship with the衙门, sheriff, court prosecutor. Okay, so we need to make a motion on the Silvish Maintenance deal.
I have a question, Judge.
Yes.
On all these additional salary increases, if there were to be a four percent increase, would they also receive that?
Uh, no, some will, some will not. Um, Um, district clerks, they will. Um, record management, she will. Or if they don't, they don't stay up with everybody. If they just get the raise, they just, they remain at the bottom. Okay. And then, um, let's see. I get, I don't show that for the sheriff's, uh, training personnel clerk. Would she get, she would just get the raise, okay? And then solvency, they would not, they would get either over the two thousand or the four percent. Then everyone else gets four percent in that area. Let's see, mental health, no, court supervisor, no, sheriff patrol, that's yes, court house secretary, yes.
I'm supposed to word it, yes. I don't see why.
Yeah.
Fifty-eight thousand, Justin. Okay.
I was going to recall, when you, when you did that, you didn't exclude us from that four percent. Also, if you, if you award four percent, and the idea was originally to get us at some point in, uh, benchmark toward the sergeant, civil sergeant. All right? And if you don't give us that four percent, then we're dropping even farther behind.
I did not show that we're even four percent.
Well, I'm just, no, I'm just saying if, if it's a word of everybody and you give it, you give it across the board to the, uh, the sheriff's people, then we're just dropping even farther behind.
We can fix the whole thing and just give everybody four percent.
I don't know what my.
There, this is getting difficult, yes.
I don't know if this might be out of turn, but, uh, I would like to make a recommendation that if everybody receives four percent, if we get four percent, however, uh, these raises are not to go with that. Cancel, cancel raises and get everybody, whatever percentage we go up to get. And that's, that's in the form of a motion.
Okay, the motion. Why a second? One second.
One second.
The motion and a second to, I want to make sure, so you said a four percent raise to everyone?
Um, I'm saying, now, I'm not saying a four percent rate, whatever we adopt as a raise. Maybe three percent, it might be two percent, I don't know, what we're going to adopt as a raise. So what I'm saying is that we remit all of those salary increases and just go to whatever percentage of raise that everybody's going to get.
What if we don't adopt?
If we don't, then we don't get it, then nobody gets any of it.
No, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought your motion said four percent.
No, no, we have, we can get four, we don't even know what we're going to give as a percentage yet.
I have a proposal, four percent. So, okay, I'm hoping that that's what happens. Okay, have a motion sent. All say our raise right here. All opposed.
It takes all this off.
Fire rescue, one off. I understand that, but can I not speak about it? I understand what's going on here. I came in with a proposal that is going to save the county money. If I give one of my people a small increase in pay and exempt him from overtime, it will save this county ultimately. Which will ultimately save me and my department from trying to figure out how to deal with people. I do not have the pleasure of people becoming here and asking for a position one year and then taking away the next, as long as I'm amongst everybody else. I think that's dirty, the way a lot of it is done. And to let you know that I'm on your side, I understand, but at the same time, I'm trying to help the county out here. And I would appreciate some consideration. Thank you.
Okay, what's, what's that on the other?
So Carrie, um, help me with this recap, because I feel like we usually spend a lot of time on this page and we haven't been, I mean, time, I feel like on this page. So this tells me we are, uh, over budgeted, roughly one and a half million dollars. And what sits in there was last time I had in my notes, an increase of five point one eight percent. So even with the five percent increase, we're in the hole if you go off to one and a half million dollars. I'm assuming you'll have to make the changes to take all of the, everything else off the table. That'll move the number a little bit, but I'd say millions, just say a million, for discussion. What's your reaction to that?
As we discussed in the past, if you look in this column here, this is a better representation of what we actually mean. So I would estimate our fund balance will grow by fifty-eight thousand. It's not great, but it's something that needs to be.
And this is assuming that departments don't overspend, right? That we, we kind of bank, if you will, on the fact that they don't use everything in their budget and we roll it over to the fund balance.
Correct, historically, we have spent by about five percent, and that's what this is assuming.
Okay, and that's the only variable in there, is that the departments don't, um, stay close to the underspending of five percent.
And that's assuming that one hit, that tax increase. Is there a reason we're wanting to continually increase the service? Obviously, it's a handed aim.
Correct.
And we're at a hundred and thirty percent.
Sorry, I just had to maybe bring it down, but I have a penny.
I'd rather do that than continue to add to our direction. Just bring down a bit. A little bit.
Or with a, yeah, a little bit. Sixty-eight cents.
We're still over the four percent.
Are you watching that, Commissioner, for the latest session?
I think the latest lecture is going to force us to stay at four percent.
Yeah, I was just trying to get your lines down.
And we're going to be, I think, trouble.
Yeah. So the four point three percent increase would be sixty-eight cents on a hundred thousand, I mean, hundred dollar valuation.
So it'd be three, three hundred and twenty-two thousand in total.
We have nothing growing in the fund balance. And we'd be, we'd be taking from fund balances. Have you, in your history with the county, how many times has that happened?
Probably in the last twenty years, maybe twice. And the only major concern I have about that is if you intend to borrow, I mean, any time in your future, on grading companies, do you look at that change in fund balance and lifestyle type reduction? And you don't want to talk about why we did that, it's an intentional reduction. That is something I don't want to see.
And you know that we are intending on doing that, so. Go back to the screen and see the PD employment.
Is this what the raise was now?
Uh, yeah. It wouldn't move it that much to anything. It would just, it's still.
No, it's not going to. It just was.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Kelly brought up a good point, and as we started this, Judge, is there, I hate to even say this, but is there a way to move from the four percent to three percent? And that was your question, did we?
Let me tell you, let me tell you one.
Okay.
Our insurance, I don't want the employees' checks to go down, which is the only reason I want to do four percent, because the insurance raised seven hundred and six thousand dollars. And we're paying fifty percent of it, and the employees take another fifty. I don't want the checks to go down.
No.
And many of them will, and they will only get three percent. I'm sorry, it's a morrow, and maybe I can't stand it, but checks go down.
Yeah, I would, I would disagree with that, I mean, I was on the insurance, I was then, then able to run that recommendation, so I feel ya there, I definitely understand that perspective.
No, that's, Carrie, if it's a payment recess, could you recap, like, things, or would it take you, can you do that in a fast, we can see it in a fast? I'll just take a payment recess. I'll have everyone's heart rate just take that all good. Because what, this is the hardest part of my entire job. Carrie, if you go back to that page, it shows the included tax. If we go to a penny and a half, it'd be five point one eight percent increase, correct? That would do, this is seventy-eight thousand. Fund balance, correct? Okay, here's what, here's something else. What if we did a two percent across the board, plus four hundred dollars cash lump sum?
Not cash.
Not cash.
Just a one time.
One time. One time. Because my four percent is going to be a lot more than some people's. Your four percent's going to be a lot more. Your four percent could be a lot more. It's maybe a little bit even.
So is the lump sum going to be like on one paycheck, or is it lumped throughout the year?
I do not know.
Okay.
Let's ask those, that's what I'm hearing.
Actually, it would be three K in this, I, I think it would be fine to do it one time, and I don't know.
I think, I think we discussed before that it was okay to do one time lump sum. That's how we did the, when we, when we implemented the payroll schedule change, like, before, we did one time lump sum.
Lump sum does not add to the base salary, is that right? It's like a bonus.
But they can't do bonus.
It's not a bonus, but.
So it's not, it's not a bonus, but it's a one time, and you don't take taxes out of it, right?
Higher rate.
Judge, remember that there are some other entities in the county that are getting that four percent, so please keep that in mind. And I also want to tell you that, that often when there's an issue with the budget, employees get hit on the head first.
Wait, go back. What do you, what do you mean, other entities in the county getting four percent?
The, uh, probation's getting their four percent, I believe, is my understanding.
If, only if we do, probation's getting two percent.
Well, I misspoke, but I'm just telling you that the county employee should not take it on the head every time there's an issue with the budgets.
Oh, we're not taking employees, hitting them on the head right now, we're trying to make it better for them, what do you?
I just want you to keep that in mind, that.
I did keep it in mind, I started out with four percent.
I understand that, but, and I'm not trying to be argumentative here, Commissioner, Judge, but I just want you to be aware of the fact that, that every time there's a problem, we talked about this last year. We got a one percent, and we talked about, well, next year, hopefully.
And the county paid for the entire insurance coverage too, remember that?
I understand that, and I'm on the insurance board, I understand that, I just want to bring that to your attention, that hopefully that, that the, the employees won't be the ones to suffer through this. We've got, this has to around, and keeping employees on the payroll, we've got people that are going to pancakes, we've got people going to the city, we've got people that are leaving for other jobs that pay better. And so we want to retain these good employees, I think that's why, like my kids, is, for instance, is saying, hey, I'll give up a, a position, so I want to, I want to try to keep my, keep these people employed, because they're in employees, and I hope that you do too.
Okay, so, um. What else did we talk about?
Just the net change on the adjustments that, um, discussed is about six thousand.
Six thousand.
Six thousand.
That's all that made the difference, six thousand.
And the main reason for that is we did leave the position in the district clerk's office, to reduce those.
If we took the positions out of district clerk facilities, and then I T, you have a position that you haven't filled in thirteen, fourteen months, right?
We're trying to.
You're still trying to? That would put how much money back in?
Just the two, maybe a hundred thousand. And one I know is in the sixteen thousand range, if I remember correctly.
Seventy, seventy. It's almost two hundred thousand. That would help a lot.
So generous, letting mine lapse that my employees are going to get, uh, not the benefit with this.
I'm sorry, say what?
With your, uh, proposal, my employees will not get the benefit, even though I'm, uh, reducing my set by one. And that was my proposal.
They will not get a benefit?
Well, no, mm-mm, it won't add up that much. And then they'll still have to be this much lower, so.
Okay, please. Any suggestions?
So you're proposing two percent, the lump sum of twelve hundred for one time, and then removing two, possibly three positions. Can we look at it and see the numbers at least, just to see where we are and start to react to that?
Can I, can I say something in reference to I T, because I think the position that Brandon was trying to fill is something to help us still out, to still help out the county with the current COBOL system that we have. So if we're taking that away, that may be an issue, because I'm not really sure if anybody over, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know if anybody on this department is really a COBOL person, because our goal is to get this.
No, I mean, a great issue of some sort, just because we're going to have to, we have to do something with that old COBOL information, so either we're going to have to find something off the shelf, if there is something, or have somebody build something for us.
Like a consultant or something like that?
Yeah, or, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Let's just look at, let's just look at solvency, district clerk.
Taking my position.
I don't know, I'm just looking at, I'm just looking, I'm just trying to, trying to figure out how they can try to balance this.
You know, they actually, I know, and they maybe make you get a little bit more, but then still the base salary will be low than, you know, four percent overall would be better.
They did, they're not here though.
And what was it, what was the change? Three oh six. And that's still at the five point one eight percent.
May I make a statement?
Hang on, just a second.
So what's that percentage you can't carry on, sir, that you cross one, five point one eight? Actually, I want to make sure I follow as you move from that sixty-eight and a half cents.
Okay, one last statement.
Oh, wait, wait.
County attorney DA, uh, got to do this mid-year. They, uh, took it and rearranged salaries, added positions, got, one got seven thousand because he's forgotten the budget for it. But now the ones that were trying to do it at the right way are being penalized.
It's just the timing thing.
I know.
You didn't come at the same.
I know, I should have, I shouldn't have. Not mid-year, but it wouldn't have gone in anyway.
Y'all are gonna understand, this is, this is, uh.
Yeah, I do understand.
Okay.
I do understand. And I know it's very hard, but I wish you would also look at these other things when that happens too.
Carol.
I know, um, nobody likes tax increases, we're all taxpayers here, but I understand it's costing business. I would much rather work for the county than the city and my money go to the county and my taxes than the city and the waste that they're doing. But you still got, you got a judge in this county that works four hours a week, he has since he took office. Makes seventy-six thousand dollars a year, does all kinds of illegal crap. Nobody ever did nothing about him, and you know who I'm talking about? Because it's been brought to everybody's attention, but he just, just doesn't, you know, doesn't work four hours a week. You know, where's the fairness in that? You have another guy, a judge who has a bailiff that hadn't worked in three months and is not even a peace officer, and makes sixty-two thousand dollars a year. I mean, your employees, the ones that work hard for you are the ones you gotta take care of. And, you know, it, I, I just hate to see the city become, the county become what the city is, cause I know how it is at the city, and it is not good over there right now. So, that's what I'm gonna say.
No, off, the only thing I might do, Judge, is just, just remind every one of the leaders in this room and elected officials. You are an open core and you are on the record. Um, please be mindful and respectful of each other. This has been difficult, not just because of the money, but because of the division that I think all of us have felt this year. Uh, it's been extremely divisive, and so I just encourage each one of us as leaders to, to dig deep and lead. This is one of those times to just call on each other to help us find common ground.
Okay, so are y'all okay with me making a motion? I really, really, really hate to get rid of those positions, so, um.
And if you left them, that they would be able to, we'd be in the three hundred thousand shortfall, right?
If you did, oh, with one penny. But if we went.
Yeah, let's see.
If we went to penny.
Two and a half, or, just as we're seeing the numbers.
Where are we after raises? Two, oh, whatever, four.
Two and twelve hundred is probably headed down now.
What would happen if you, I'm just throwing this out, I have, cause I have no idea. But what would happen if you paid, like, for the increases that are occurring with the insurance? And then gave a raise, would that make any difference?
If you paid more on the insurance?
You mean all of it?
Not all of it, no, the increases that are currently fixing to happen. Does that make any kind of a dent on it? Not all of it.
Paying sixty percent instead of fifty percent.
Right.
As you say.
Well, I don't know. I think.
I'm sorry. I mean, I just don't know, I mean, just, you know, just trying to figure out what.
I know, I thought about that too, but I don't know about this.
Cause that's what we did last year.
Right.
Was, and I felt like there was a general consensus in the audience to say, we're okay with the smaller COBOL because the county covered the insurance, so, like, to the extent that we did. Um, it seemed like everybody was on board. I mean, department heads were coming up saying, yeah, we can, we can do that.
I think it was. From my memory, um. How long is that, do we type group figure out?
Oh, God. I'd have to go back and get all the figures. I don't, I don't have them all with me yet. And then they broke it on before I did.
Do you think they're done today? Could you leave here for the next year? You know what I mean? What do we need to do today?
Well, we really needed to come up with a proposal to base that we can, perhaps.
So are you, are the department heads like officials, are you leaning toward the four percent, are you leaning toward the two? Four?
I'm like.
Well, four.
Yeah. Yeah, four.
None of it, and not, and no lump sum. What are you leaning towards? Just asking.
Four.
Four. So even though your four percent's gonna be way more than your lowest employee? Yeah, I throw a court, yeah. I mean, it's a.
I mean, my, my lowest employee needs the four percent. That would benefit them. You know, the two percent plus twelve hundred is beneficial in the short term, but in the long term, the four percent comes in.
Mm-hmm.
And the change, you know, and subsidizing more, and the insurance is great, but you can't eat the insurance.
True.
You can't take it. That's what they told me was, so it's not as tasty. Tastelessness.
And I judge that there's just a few of us that do not have the insurance, so I don't know the company that does it because of water situation.
I know, there were some that don't, so they're okay. They're gonna get the whole. Full monte.
Could we see it with the four? So you, well, with the four, could we see, well, I don't know, I mean, I'm just trying to throw all angles. What if we saw the four? What do you think that much of a dent if we saw the four and took out those positions, the two that you talked about? That's the clerk and the.
Four percent. And you only had.
Thousand two positions.
And what was it with, I'm sorry, what was it with these two positions?
It was like fifty.
Fifty. Fifty.
Almost a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it has. So that really helped it, those two positions. So you, with that last model, you took out the two percent lump sum and you added four percent back in, and then took out the two positions.
I wish there was someone that could make an accounting policy that, that every, every position is filled. No money to take from anywhere, so no one could give their people raises at any point in time, just every position filled. Is there any way we can make that statement? With a policy of some sort?
Well, my, pretty much the positions as budgeted, well, pretty much have that authority, the same though where somebody comes to you asking for it.
It just doesn't seem fair, because, you know, Mike may get to do it now, but he probably is gonna go into, Caroline may get to, but everyone else have, a lot of everyone, a lot of people have.
And I don't want me to speak for a minute, I used to, in my prior life, I used to negotiate police contracts. And typically what happens is when you start giving, uh, you know, like, percentage raises, that has a tendency to draw all the positions further apart, the people at the top start waving, really out disting, distancing the people at, at the bottom. And the standing rule has always been generally in negotiations, that you can do that for maybe four years, but then it starts getting so lopsided, you have to go back and then benchmark those positions, look at the surrounding area and see what those businesses are worth in the marketplace, and then bring them to the place where they should be. And then, then you can start with, again, with whatever, uh, and, and, but you have to go back and, and do, and, and the county just never get to that going back. You know, and that's why all of these wages, there's, there's, there's such discrepancies i- in the various positions.
And my guys been for a long time.
Yeah, and you, you just gonna have to bite the bullet at some point and sit down and say, hey, you know, uh, yeah, it's nice for a department head to make this, or it's nice for a foreman to make this, but let's be realistic based on what is happening in the, the, uh, in the private sector. And otherwise, you're, you're gonna face this every year.
The way y'all used to try to fix that problem is to give the department heads some discretionary money out of whatever the raise was. And that's the only way, if you're gonna give flat percentages, that's the only way I can pay you. That's what I did. I used that discretionary money to close the gap, not make it wider.
I can tell you the school district establishes a midpoint. And if you're above midpoint, if you're salary range, you're, you're not gonna get as big of a percentage as if you pull up midpoint. And it's all for the purpose of keeping that gap from getting too far.
There's issues with everything, everything we did with issues, so.
Helping, Judge, instead, we could still do the two percent plus the twelve hundred. And rather than paying a one-time payment, just let it go into their base. And boy, we get the, you're after your benefit, that Melin was talking about, if you do that. And then by anyone less than sixty thousand gets more than four percent, and above sixty thousand gets less.
That's interesting. So you're saying, and then it could be construed as a bonus, right? And that also helps that perspective, but you're saying two percent and the twelve hundred, so instead of, and it is one time.
Just put it into the base.
Oh, yes. And so divide it out per page period. And that way when it's budget time next year, they have twelve hundred more plus the two percent.
It would just fall into the base. That's a good. That's interesting.
Would that affect the numbers much?
No, it wouldn't affect them at all, because you're still paying now the seven dollars. Sure would be, next year your bases will be in the four percent higher instead of two percent.
Would that, just as that seventy-eight figure that you were at a while ago, cause this is the four percent that we go in there.
Right, this is the four percent less of.
Those two positions, if you did the two percent with the twelve hundred that you started with, Judge. So, yeah, that's the true. And, and Melin, I feel like that speaks a little bit to your comment about the midpoint. Um, not directly that, but it addresses.
It does, uh, uh, one thing to clarify is that midpoint for that type of position.
Right.
Not with the midpoint across the entire school district.
Right, yes.
To do that, we could, we'll have to put like positions and like salary first.
Well, yeah, he would really.
Yeah, he took that approach, a formal approach with what Melin's.
Carrie, put those two positions back in.
You know, I hadn't funded my position anyway, so it's essentially not there. It was already.
Put that one position back in.
So that's got two percent, the twelve hundred dollar bonus that goes into the base.
Non-bonus.
Not, the twelve hundred, non-bonus.
Two percent plus twelve hundred dollars base.
Base, twelve hundred base. Mike's position is back in, so the only one route is Caroline's, and then the, we're still at five point one eight percent increase.
Sounds like a motion, right?
I was just trying to say that for a second, process what just happened.
Okay, um, okay, I make a motion that we do two percent plus twelve hundred dollar across the board. Uh, increase for everybody, uh, leave Mike's positions in. Caroline's are out, cause they were already out to begin with. Raise taxes by penny and a half of five point one eight percent from last year. Go to the second.
I'll say.
The motion ends second. Hold the paper, raise your hand. Opposed, this is three to one. Thank you, Jesus. Okay, okay, so, with that being settled and voted on, I announce that the next public meeting for the, uh, tax, hopefully, budget is August twenty-seventh at nine AM. Any questions?
What y'all just did, did anything about putting the P N's culture together?
Sheriff, you have one other thing, or can I bring up a thing about enterprise?
Yeah, I, I got real confused on the email that you put out last week on, on the other side. And the ones that said cycle now. I don't know if there's, we just need to clarify something on that, and I don't know where we're going, are there, I don't remember if we put any budget on that. And we said, are we filling the budget? Tell me.
Well, and I, you know, I'll come back and talk to them. I felt like the whole thing was a mess, because we, the joke had recommended, maybe we only look at putting twenty-one. Because we, the joke had recommended, maybe we ought to look at what we're trying to have, um, the process issue. So we asked him to analyze the, uh, the most needed replacement, and that's the one that's to be done, actually. But it had seems to be people's on it, and, um, not necessarily the ones that they thought it's dealt with. So I did send him another list that had, uh, actually, that he definitely told us that you could request it. The ones that maintenance specifically requested, county attorney, district attorney, uh, district representative manager, and then, which, the ones that people came back and said, we really want to replace these bases.